Um exterior lighting and various things. And I sent her a very general response. Explaining what the process is that we're very early in discussions about a TIF. That the first part of it is deciding which properties would be in TIF districts. And the next part would be which types of projects could obtain funding? And that um the earliest we would have a TIF to the voters and in enacted would be next winter, spring. I did not say, I didn't give any opinion as to the particular request that she had, but obviously, I don't think that any business or person's property is like personal property or real property is likely to be a beneficiary. But it depends on what a request is, so there was no point in speculating about that. But unfortunately, despite multiple communications with me and Brandon about what a TIF would look like if we, if the voters adopt one here. She seems to continue to think that the Port Clyde General Store as an entity will benefit. I don't know.
Every time that I've spoken with her, I reiterated that the board's stance from the beginning is that they had no desire to like benefit in any individual private business. And you know, she'd mentioned sidewalks and how those were, you know, like more of a community service. But there frankly, isn't enough room for sidewalks between her property and Cold Storage Road. And so, you know, I, and I said that, and so unless she was looking to donate enough property for the town to put in sidewalks there, then there really wasn't a way for us to do so.
So that's the status of that, but I wanted to make you aware of that email request.
Did she mention the raising of the road again? I know that she talked about putting in the store and then doing that after.
So we do not, based on their current design, although I had not seen plans, but what I heard from Veronica is that the road will not need to be raised. They're not, um, they're no longer raising uh the squidding building or any of that. And so um they are gonna have a staircase up the front and then a ramp at the side. And so uh.
But it's true that in her email, she made some reference to that that I found confusing because I know she had told you that it wasn't something that needed to happen now. So I
I spoke with her on the phone. She didn't mention um the road at all. She just mentioned sidewalks and lights.
Okay. So I, I mean, I think this is why it's important for the whole process to play out the way it's supposed to that. They go before the planning board with specific plans. We proceed with the TIF consideration and program development. And then we consider individual projects um that might benefit from that. But as we've discussed before, if you do a TIF essentially even when it's first approved, it's like an empty bank account and there's no money in it for anybody unless you borrow against anticipated revenue. So we're kind of a ways from having money for anybody. Um, the next communication to mention is um Ken and Lorraine Gill, who live on Barter's Point Road, have a single family home and they wanted to create an apartment in their house that they were committed to renting to a year round resident. Um, and unfortunately, their septic capacity isn't sufficient to allow for them to add a kitchenette in this apartment. And so they, they got that word from Terry Brackett and found it hard to understand how that could be. And so
The confusion is that their septic is arguably adequate for three people, which is what they are imagining. Or even four people, right? If a couple were to move in. But the laws around it state that, you know, the minimum the laws essentially only state that it must be adequate. And that's up to the code enforcement officer to determine. But an ADU is an additional dwelling and the minimum septic requirement for a dwelling is 180 gallons. And so that would mean that to have two dwellings on a lot, Terry's interpretation is that you need a minimum of 360 gallons uh of septic capacity. So even though they are only having three people in this proposed plan, um, the law is again based around the, the capacity, right? Two dwellings could support eight people easily, you know, or more. And so so they were frustrated um based on that.
I heard from them too.
Well, isn't the original septic design issued per bedroom and kitchen, right?
Yes.
And so that's, I mean, the law is the law. I'm sorry to say that, but septic is really important to do it properly. Um, so I, I mean, if they really want to do it, they're gonna have to expand the capacity of their septic fields.
And they, they actually were and are in the process of putting in a new septic.
Yeah.
So it is something that would be available to them. Obviously it would cost more.
Right.
They'd have to redesign what they already had planned. And so they're aware that that's their option. It just, you know, when, when your vision of how it's gonna be used, it should be adequate. It's frustrating that the, the laws are based on potential use, not just you and your user situation this year because the property could well outlast these.
If they rented it to five people, that would be different.
Yeah. Or they sell the house and it's
Right. Yeah. But yeah, I mean, it, based on those scenarios, it has to be the way
Right.
it's written right now.
Right. So we did convey that to them and it's unfortunate because we all share the concern that we don't have enough housing for year round people. And here's somebody that wants to make it happen. I mean, these are the hurdles that we have because we don't have a sewer system especially. You know, all these communities in Maine that have sewer systems are in a very different position for ADUs than our little town, which is too bad.
Good point. Wouldn't it be an issue?
No, it would not be an issue. It would be over. They'd be able to do it. Um, also, I had some communications with Steve Thomas, who as you may remember, is concerned about um cell service dead spots in Port Clyde. And um I just was letting him know that if there was some group of Port Clyde residents that wanted to get together to um explore options about that, just like our broadband committee did a few years ago to get broadband everywhere in town. Um, that they could do that, but unfortunately, it would be a citizen driven um effort because you know, we don't have staff to make that happen. And of course, it's it's up to consolidate it or whomever.
One um piece around that that will provide a little bit of aid is that uh Port Clyde Landing will have Wi-Fi. It's required for the security cameras so that Ryan can watch. Uh, he intends to leave that open.
Code? Oh, so it'll be open?
Open to the, so that, you know, I, I know at least for iPhones, if you have Wi-Fi, you can call out and send text messages and all that. And so
Just like in the COVID era where people would go sit out in front of the library that had Wi-Fi to do homework and laptops.
Yeah. So there will at least be a spot in Port Clyde with the liable.
Yeah.
You know.
Wi-Fi phone service.
I, the, the future is things like Phidium
Right.
and Starlink. Um, and that may, they may have to wait till that catches up or they, or you can do it now. It's just expensive to.
Well, that's what I was wondering, given the resources of some Port Clyde residents, that if a group of them wanted to band together and share the cost of something like that, they could explore that while the summer people are here.
Phidium is working its way down the peninsula, so I don't think it's that far out.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's not south of 73.
No, not yet, but they are.
They've been saying that for two years, but someday it'll happen, yes. And then if you would talk about the people with their burning tires.
Yeah. So I got um a couple of different communications around, yeah, the um folks doing burnouts on Wollston Road. Um, in the beginning, it was pretty centrally located to like right in front of the transfer station, right around that area. Now it's sort of stretching um from uh like where Wollston and Turkey Cove meet all the way up to the church. Um, one woman emailed me and said that the sheriff's department told her to talk to the town, which
What? Yeah.
I have a hard time believing frankly, because they know that we have no mechanism for traffic enforcement. And so I encouraged her to reach back up to the sheriff's department.
Yeah.
And another woman came in similar complaints and I told her to talk to her neighbors and to call the sheriffs and to call them every day until it's, it's fixed and that we just paid a million and a half of tax dollars to the, you know, county. And this is part of the service that comes with that. So
I know there's at least one sheriff that's personally trying to help down here.
Yeah.
Good. Well, I saw them doing it one day. I was driving by there and I saw the person and there was, the tires were totally flat because he was wheeling around. And there was a fire under the truck and I thought, I gotta get by this guy, you know, get out of here. As he backed onto his property right there on Wollston. Um.
That's the hard part is that, so that
I don't know who it was.
The communication that we've had with the sheriffs that they, they need to catch them in the act or on video. And so they said, you know, if we get any video from the transfer station, um, then to send it to them.
Well, I noticed there were some comments that said like, why isn't the town doing this? Why isn't the select board addressing this? I guess we get what we pay for.
What are you gonna do?
Uh, so.
Well, no, I mean, we're not. We're not in the law enforcement business.
I don't know. Yeah, we're not gonna be out there in our PJs at two in the morning. Yeah, right.
I mean, it, it was happening 60 years ago. You know, I mean, it's like nothing new.
I, I will say this is much more egregious than any sort of isolated incident of somebody.
Yeah, it's like the occasional.
Right. I mean, it's easy to see on the road and if it's happening that frequently, that is, I think it justified disturbance of the peace for neighbors and
Yeah.
you know, folks walking on the road are nervous and
I wonder if anybody has Nest cameras or anything, any video footage from their front doors.
Somebody does. I, that's what I was told.
Okay.
Never go long around here.
There are. A couple more communications that didn't make it on the agenda that I wanted to share. I had more um complaints about the uh, what is being referred to as a junkyard at Ripley Creek. Um, and as well as the, you know, storage of his um trailer and boat in the, the marsh turnaround. I'd met with him last week and he said that um, they should be gone by Friday. They were not. And so today, um, I held them over to the, I had Steve haul them over to the transfer station. Uh, they're blocking a, in the way of a hydrant by the marsh and so it's a safety concern at that point. And so I told him to let me know when he has a spot for them and we'll get them back to him. As for the um the, what is being referred to as a junkyard and there's a reason I'm phrasing it like that and I'll get to it. But um, another neighbor complained um again and said that, you know, she's like really running out of patience and um is gonna, is going to get a lawyer involved uh next. And so I met with them um about it to let him know, uh, as well as the property owner, remember the um person who's uh junk appliances, cars, whatever you want to call it, uh, is not the property owner. And so I did actually meet with the property owner. She doesn't want she wants to avoid, you know, fines, anything legal and many of that. And so I'm optimistic that they will actually um make some improvements this time. There have been some improvements. So as you'll remember, it may be a, a month or so ago, maybe a month and a half. Um, maybe even more than, I think it was the spring. Anyway, um, Terry and I had both been over there and a lot of junk was hauled out. What has replaced it is um, right now there are currently two unregistered vehicles and there are a lot of uh appliances. So washing machines, air conditioners, et cetera.
Have you been taking photographs to document at each stage? You know, this is what it looked like then, that?
No, I haven't. And in hindsight,
Yeah.
I should have. Um, Terry's interpretation right now though, is that he doesn't think it any longer meets the definition of a junkyard.
Okay.
That if washing machines are being repaired and that they're still usable and they're being, you know, sold and flipped, that, that is not a junkyard. If they're being scrapped, then it is a junkyard. I, the state's definition, I think, agrees with him. A junkyard means a yard, field or other outside area used to store, dismantle or otherwise handle discarded, worn out or junked plumbing, heating supplies, electronic or industrial equipment, household appliances or furniture. Terry's interpretation is that these are not discarded or worn out or junked and that they're being actively repaired and that there's nothing against that. And he says, you know, we don't have a, a maintenance ordinance around, you know, the sort of visual appeal that your property needs to be kept up, your visual standard.
But for the cars, is he working on the cars? Because I know part of the junkyard statute, the concerns relate to oil and whatnot, and this is a property right on the water. Um, it's one thing if he's working on them, but it's another thing.
You are allowed, I can't remember. Let's see if I have, there's, you're, I can't remember if you are allowed to um, you're either allowed one or two unregistered vehicles on your property.
Oh.
After that, that's when he would need a junkyard um or automobile salvage yard permit. So until then, I think right now he has two and you are allowed to.
So he has good appliances that he's repairing to resell?
Uh, yes.
So does he have a resale shop and does he need a permit and all that?
He sells them, he sells them offsite. So he brings them, you know, he'll bring them out of a building, you know, um, bring them to his house, fix them up and then sell them elsewhere.
What does the owner of the property think of that business separate from the cars?
Um, well, I mean, she thinks that he's too old to be working that hard, that he should have somebody.
You were gonna say that.
I'm just telling you what it is. She thinks, you know, she wishes that um things didn't sit as long when they came back. You know, not always a tight turnaround and the why the neighbors get frustrated and so and I think the washing machines have been there several weeks now, so.
Sitting in the yard or is it inside a building? Because
He has a canvas tent, um, but some of them are out in the yard right now.
If it's setting outside in the weather, I mean, who's gonna buy them?
I know, but if we start drawing lines there, there's a lot of properties that have things like that.
Well, let's hope the property owner
We don't, we don't have to define junk because the state does for us. And so I think the more we stick to that.
Okay.
Which is tough because if he says like, no, this is being actively repaired.
Well, so maybe the picture idea is worth um pursuing so that you have documentation and a timeline. And if the same machines are sitting there.
It's interesting because there's, there's a level at which we might consider it unsightly, something we don't want to look at, but it still isn't a weak, it's not a violation.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have any ordinance that covers that.
Well, and you know, somebody could argue that looking at 800 lobster traps is unsightly and I don't think that we want to go down that road.
Right.
A lot of people are good.
Right.
Really good.
Yeah.
And the boat in the yard and the buoys.
Yeah.
And so, you know, his, his argument is like, it's all people making a living and requires some stuff.
I mean, maybe if it doesn't go way down the road, the neighbors could talk to him and maybe he could put like a hedge up or something like that, that
There really just isn't room.
There, okay.
It's, I think it's less than half an acre that he's on.
All right.
So by the time the house is there, there's the road and it's right of way.
Okay.
He has currently a canvas like um tent, sort of like one of those.
Things you put up for your car.
Exactly, exactly. And keeping more and more in there, but there's if you would stick to the capacity of that, I think that there would be no problem and get the cars out.
And I forgot, there was also a communication from Bonnie Percival that I shared with all of you about um, her concerns about affordable housing or lack of it here. And I just want to ask whether people were comfortable with the kind of response that I sent her or whether you feel like we should decide as a group on a response.
No, I, I think your response was fine. I just think that that's a complicated issue and it needs to be unpacked between the select board and the planning board. Because there's lots of things, if you spin out the ramifications of certain things, it's a big deal for the town.
Well, and the CDC, I'm hoping that the CDC will before too long have sort of a update the community on their housing efforts and
You know, I wish Mike Felton's in charge of it now.
Right.
Last communication, so yeah, but some of them are in full swing. Um, I, I have a response years ago. Uh, is uh whether or not the town had considered moving uh Driftin Road to one way while it is one lane in the center. Um, I had told them I had considered it and, but hadn't gotten any further, mostly just because uh there are other things that are taking up more time right now, so.
What's going on down there lately? I mean, the weather hasn't been conducive to sitting on the beach, but how's it been in terms of parking and
More people parking on the road than in the lot.
Yeah, definitely. I've been there a few times.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and so I, I think the locket's full on really nice days after the road is full.
I haven't seen people on both sides, so in the same area, you know, on one side and then the other, but not at the same place.
I will say that I agree. I, I've been down there most days and I, I have yet to see cars on both sides of the road.
Couple of days I've seen it, but not like last year.
And then um Steve reached out with a question about the, the ramp. Sorry, I don't know. Was there more discussion about going to one way?
Well, I mean, is that a pending decision that you're gonna make? And you know, is that something that we're gonna weigh in on? What's the?
Oh, I would love for you all to weigh in on it.
Okay.
Well, that's a question I have. Brandon is the road superintendent. And
Technically, but
Is it? Okay, road commissioner, you know, how down in the weeds does the select board want to get in decisions like that? You know, I I'm not sure. I
My impression is that it's working okay and without any collisions, people seem to be
Well, you don't want to wait for collision.
No, no, but I don't think, I, people seem to go very slowly when they see it's one way and they wait, somebody waits while the other car passes.
I'll say that when you, I mean, you do get people walking both ways. And so when you have people walking both ways and cars both ways, it gets, you know, I, you can see how it could become dangerous if folks weren't being, you know, alert.
Yeah.
Angles of tension.
You have no inclination to make it one way, do you?
I, I mean, I had, I had considered it. I wondered it. And then I just didn't go anywhere with it. So I think, do, do I think it would be safer as a one way? Yes. Um, would it generate more complaints as a one way? Possibly. Yeah.
Yes.
So
I think it would be helpful in general for you to help us clarify our role with respect to those road decisions. Um, because we don't have anything in front of us right now, but it would be useful for you to know when you need to bring something to the select board and when you don't and you can just decide.
I agree. I think that, I mean, my understanding from training is that I've um gone to and whatnot is that anything day to day and like operations is like within my sort of wheelhouse. Um, and I have, you know, autonomy on and then anything that is like bigger picture decision making should come through the board first. So whether or not this, you know, you're changing the sort of use and status of a road, that feels a little bit bigger picture than maintenance.
But not if it were temporary.
Right. I mean, it could be temporary for a year, you know, a year plus.
But my gut instinct is safety first and I mean, people are always going to complain and I've heard people come here with individual issues about drift in, but I just think safety first. So if you need our backing, you know, our support in some way in terms of your decision, you know, I think we can do it if we all agree. I mean, maybe I'm the only one that feels that way. I just um I mean, I feel like people park willy nilly there and it drives me insane. And I, in general, don't go on that road in the summer because children run right out in front of you. Yeah. I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, you can be going like three miles an hour and suddenly there's children, right? Crossing the road without looking. So my vote is whatever's the safest, we should do it. And you know, people will just have to get accustomed to a change. Because if we didn't do something to protect safety and something happened, we'd be in the doghouse too. So.
Yeah, the thing is that I think where I sort of got hung up trying to make a decision is that like, is this actually caused by the road being down to one way in that one section? I don't know that it is. It's a small section. And so, you know, does fixing the road, removing those barriers and opening it back up to two lanes, like I, I don't know that that's any you know, different than its current sort of status.
Well, well, let us know. I could need something from us.
I mean, I think that's a bigger conversation about the future of that road.
If you talk to the sheriff's department to get any of their opinion as far as traffic and what they think the traffic pattern down there is and
Would probably be DOT rather than the sheriff's department. Um, but yeah, I, I think that's probably a good resource to pursue and see if they
Our road, right? It's a town.
Yeah.
I, I mean, this is for another discussion, but I still like the idea of it of ending, ending the road at the beach and having it parked there. Then you wouldn't have
Or bridge, like a pedestrian.
Right, a pedestrian. And just have no traffic going through. Then the kids can run across.
Right. I agree. I agree.
And they use the parking lot and the rest of it is not open to vehicles. But anyway, that's way down the road, way down the road.
No, it should be on the list. Let's do the warrant and then we'll have um
This, this, I think Brandon was gonna
Oh, sorry.
to the ramp.
So another communication was that um the ramp uh sort of lands you onto like a rock pile. Um, we tried to do something about that last year, adding in some more fill, but that, the high, the high water comes all the way out.
Washes it away.
And so, yeah, so it's um it's a, a pretty futile effort because Steve would always be going down there with more material. We, you know, we can't remove all the rocks from the beach. Yeah, it's, but I, I do wish that it, uh, it'd be nice if the landing was a little bit better. I, I hear that. I, I don't see any
I have heard that the ramp's dangerous.
We could take it back out again, but it
It helps people though, to have it.
Yeah, and the ramp has to be removable because otherwise you're with Army Corps of Engineers and DEP.
Would it go a little further or would that be a problem with the tides? Because I
If it goes any further, it will be in the high wa, like it'll be, the high tide will, yeah, and potentially moved. And I, then I think less secure.
The only thing I thought of was if you had some, like, you know, like you see in foundation stones, big granite black pieces and you could set them
But that would be permanent. That would give it permanent. And you can't, can't do that.
Yeah.
Not without
Yeah.
Then we run into all kinds of stuff.
Yeah.
The plan was to figure that out once we had a plan for that road in general. You know what I mean? That they would likely all tie in. And so until then, use a temporary tie in. And so until then, use a temporary ramp. If folks feel like the ramp is somehow more dangerous than what was there before, I'm happy to take it out. I think Steve would be elated too.
I, I've heard a lot of people appreciate it. But have you heard Brian?
I've just heard a few people say that it is dangerous.
They'd rather not have. When they get to the bottom, I mean.
Yeah, the loose rocks and stuff.
Rodney, did you wanna say something?
Uh, the, the entrance to the beach used to be more in front of that big rock that's right there. And the road is actually lower there, so the angle wasn't as bad. And you didn't even need the ramp then. That was before the storm. And then, you know, just by accident or whatever, you know, the main thing obviously was to stick the rocks there for safety and all that stuff, protect the road and everything. And then I think they just put the entrance to the beach in the wrong spot. Like I say, closer to, as, as you're looking at the ramp, looking down it, the opening used to be way more to the right. Like I say, where it was more gentle, before we, the ramp, the ramp's only been there since after the storm.
Right.
We never had one, so. Maybe that.
Well, that was Brandon's most popular move when he first came on board, putting the ramp in to make it easier for all their folks.
No, no, I understand all that. Now, I didn't, you know, that was awesome, you know? But like you said, unfortunately, it, it dumps you off on the unstable rocks and, you know, neighbor across the street there, the doctor lady that can't get down the beach and now when other people can't either.
She could before?
Oh, yeah.
When it was in the old.
It before.
It's, it's other nature, other nature changed things, not the ramp.
Right, yeah. Right, I'm not saying anything bad about whoever was involved in doing that. I know the main situation was, oh my goodness, that road's destroyed, let's get it operational. But, you know, maybe like I say, if the road, I mean, the entrance of beach can just be moved, moved back to where it was.
I'll revisit it. At this point, the ramp's gonna remain until we can find a better, a, and again, what we said last year, we imagined it would be temporary for one season and then when there was a bigger plan for the road, we could go through the permitting process of putting a more permanent and solid entrance into the beach in. Um, up until last year, the town stance was that we didn't wanna put anything there for an entrance, um, which I found bizarre because we provide parking. And so there was already an acknowledgement of like supporting folks using the beach, so.
Yeah.
Anyway.
It does need to be part of a bigger assessment of the situation, solutions.
Mm-hmm.
So are we done with our communications?
I think so.
Stuff. Let's do the warrant and then we'll have um, signed stuff for Christina so she can get up here. So, um, Irene, I did have a couple of questions. What was the period of time covered by the staff who sent us this afternoon? This is just two weeks, okay. Um, and can, this is, you know, Brian's new to the select board. Can you explain the, the fees that we pay for the transfer station, what these different things mean? And payments, like transportation of waste, that's what that is, right?
Mm-hmm, so that's hauling out, out full cans. And then we pay a fee for our demo cans as well. And then there are recycling fees, um. And then, although some of that is revenue, we try to hold recycling until revenue. Um, and then, uh, there are certain types of waste that we have to pay separate fees for, so, um, it falls into one of two categories, either universal or special waste. And those are things like appliances and uh, or things with freon, um, fall into their own category. And so you'll see those, those, the two main fees that you see show up, the transport, that's your just normal uh, trash and garbage and then the tipping fees are the other waste that we have to dispose of.
Right, if there's a waste management, that's the tipping fees. Yeah.
And like the last bill for waste management, you know, I think it was for the, only even half the month, I think it was nine thousand dollars. You know, so it's expensive, it's tough to budget for, we have
Yeah.
no control over it.
Um, and the MMA insurance payment of almost eighteen thousand dollars, is that our premium for a whole year or what?
No, that's a month.
We pay them eighteen thousand a month?
That's, yes, we do pay that insurance on a monthly basis. That's the town share of the health insurance as well as what's withheld from the employees' paychecks.
So, where it says MMA Town Office Insurance, that's health and, I'm on page one of the department summary under Town Office. So that's for health insurance. I was assuming it was.
Okay, so you've got, there's workman comp insurance?
Yeah, no, I'm not talking about those.
The next line down.
That seventeen thousand eight hundred and eighty-three, that was the one I was trying to figure out, if that was property insurance?
No, that would, that would be the the town's insurance, that's not the health insurance.
The town's insurance for the property.
Property.
Owned by the town.
Right.
Is that, is that rate still monthly, Irene?
No, I think.
That's annual.
That's what I was assuming.
Yeah.
I was assuming that was our annual premium, but I wanted to make sure.
We have the, we have the health insurance through the same company.
Right. And the Old Woods Farm Homeowners Association, nine hundred and twenty-five.
That's a year. That's what we have to pay every year. That's an annual payment.
It's actually biannual. We pay twice a year. Our dues are fourteen hundred and so we paid into seven hundred dollar payments. Um, this one had an added uh, one-time fee for plowing of the trailhead parking lot. And so that's why it is, you know, two hundred and twenty-five dollars more, um. And so, they said that adding the parking lot to their plowing, um, increased their plowing bill by thirty percent, which is wild to me because it's much less than thirty percent of the road, but that must just be
Very tiny parking lot.
The way that, um, their, their plow guy bills, I guess. And so, um, Steve, Steve plows our trailheads. And so next year, next winter, we'll just have him add that to it. And these, um, the biannual fees will revert to seven hundred dollars.
Right, and they are aware of that, they're plow person.
What, that Steve will plow?
Steve's gonna do it?
I don't communicate with their plow person. I, I, the HOA is aware and I, and is going to communicate it.
Okay, is that Loreen or somebody else?
Yes, Loreen.
Okay.
As well as a, a couple others. You're back from the Harbor Committee, um, Saunders.
And my last question, Irene, was at the very bottom of the page, these Beach Hill Research and Gulf of Maine Research Institute.
This is the um, Climate Action Plan.
That's the climate action grant that we anticipate getting.
So this, we're, this is money coming in or money going out?
That's money going out.
Going out. We anticipate getting reimbursed from the grant.
Okay.
We will. And we signed the contract a while ago. We just have not received the funds yet and so
Okay.
we'll reimburse the general fund when it comes in.
Did anybody else have any questions about the warrant? All right, thank you. Christina, you're up.
All right.
And welcome to the select board.
Hello, community members. Um, I'm Christina Watten, the new superintendent, um, of St. George Municipal School Unit. So I just wanted to introduce myself and I have lots of lovely paperwork that I will leave you with. Um, but just so you know a little bit about me and who is your neighbor now in town, um, I've been a school administrator, um, I think this is my fifteenth year. I was an assistant superintendent for seven years. Um, for uh, six years in RSC forty, I was also a school principal for five years in RSC forty. Um, a very similar uh, style school, it was pre-K through six, um, but Union Elementary School and Tuskette Memorial School. Um, prior to that, I was a special education teacher, um, so I think this is my nineteenth year in the educational system. Um, I'm very proud to be here in St. George. This has been a dream job that I didn't think would be coming so soon. Um, I was actually very happy in my role. I would, my most previous role was at, in Augusta as the assistant superintendent there. Very much enjoyed my job, um, but when this job became open, I, this has always been, I said I'd never wanna be a superintendent unless it's in St. George, um, or I would say unless it was Mike Felton, um, but so, um, I just have always loved this community. My husband and I were married in the Tennant Harbor Baptist Church. My daughter went to Blueberry Cove for, I think, seven summers in a row. I was an educator at the um, Herringut um, program. I had aquaponics in my classroom as a teacher. Uh, just have always loved this community and uh, the feel you get when you come down the peninsula here. I live in Waldaborough, so not too far, but I am an outsider for now. Um, we would love to move to this area eventually. Um, we've been looking, I have, but outside of education, I have a lot of life experiences. I have a twenty-three, three-year-old daughter. Um, she's living on her own, so I'm happy and proud about that. Um, I have a twenty-year-old son who has very significant disabilities. Uh, my husband is a stay-at-home dad after being a lobster man his life, um. For the last thirteen years, he has dedicated his life to be at home with our son and taking care of the day-to-day with him. Um, and he's just my rock and I'm just very pleased to be here. So I just wanted you to know a little bit about who was coming, moving to town and I opened my doors to meet with you and collaborate. And I wanna have a really positive relationship with the select board here. And I just thank you for all you do for the community here because it's amazing. And I try not to be um, boastful when I'm talking to my colleagues, but it's really hard not to, um, with what resources that you provide to the school here. It's amazing and I'm so proud to be here. So, um, I brought forth with me tonight, um, a large amount of paperwork. I wanna apologize. We were supposed to receive this paperwork on Friday and FedEx came to the school and didn't think anyone was there, even though there was. Um, and they left, um, and would not come back until today. And so for hours, we watched the cameras like stalking FedEx. I talked to a kid on a golf cart and he said they're by Atwood's quarry twenty-five minutes ago. So we like, at like four something, I don't know what time I called you, Brandon, but I apologize. I had hoped to have you these papers before tonight so you could have a chance to look over them. Um, there's a great deal of signatures required. Um, so I will leave them with you. Um, I'm hopeful to send them back to lawyers by Friday, um, so that we can close on this loan next week. And so coming into this is a little wacky, but um, I will leave these with your. This is, yes, and the bond. So that will save uh, the district and town a lot of money. So I thank you for your support of this project and they are working, I don't know if you've driven up um, Juniper or the school road, but it's all newly tarred. Um, I do have an RFP out for line painting, so if anybody online or anybody around knows anybody that paints lines, I've reached out to a couple of people, just letting them know that they're, maybe you might know somebody. Um, that would be extremely helpful. We'd love to have that before the grand opening of the Maker Station.
Like a walk-in area on one side of the driveway, as I guess.
I don't honestly know to tell you that, but that sounds like a great idea.
I circulate, some students walk to school.
Yes, they do. Yes, they do. Um, so, but it's been just such an amazing warm welcome, getting to know everybody. I've been reaching out to community members such as Sarah and Ryan down at Blueberry Cove and just wanting to collaborate and just it, it's amazing. So I will leave these um, with you.
And you should know that at our last meeting, we talked about our priorities for the year and one of them is to have a strong um, relationship with the school board and the school and make sure that we have good communication, particularly about fiscal matters. Um, so.
We're here for you. Had met and talked about that and we'll make sure that, you know, Irene and Candy, the school's business manager, uh, you know, are meeting and have a quick turnaround on audits and things like that. And so, you know, once um, Christina gets a little settled in after the school year starts, we'll, we'll begin those meetings.
So it's important to us too.
Absolutely. It's very important to me too. I met with Brandon and Farah and just, I want folks' lines to be open and to be transparent with you as well. So thank you for saying that.
Thanks. All right, well, we've got our pens. We'll get to work here in a little bit.
Yeah, so there's, I mean, you can see it's a lot and there's a ton of signatures required. Did folks want the time to review that and come into the office to do it? Um, it, it does need to be notarized, and so thankfully we have Irene here tonight if we wanted to.
I think we should do it. I'm, I'm in favor of doing it now.
Great, do you wanna do it at the end of the meeting?
At the end of the meeting, so that. Oh, no.
I'll, I'll bring these by tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you all so much. It's so nice to meet you all.
Were there any other public comments from people on Zoom or in person? Um, do people have any concerns about things that are not on the agenda? No, okay. Um, so we took care of that. A liquor license for the black carpool.
This, I just need a vote from you all to approve or not. I've had no complaints.
Didn't we do that last night? Did I dream that?
We might have done.
Not do that last night.
No, okay.
I think we did some other, some other there.
I think you did the um, BYOB license for the Historical Society.
Oh, maybe that was it.
I move, we approve the liquor license for the black carpool.
I'll second.
All in favor? That's everybody. Um, all right, so the Select Board Policy Manual. Um, so as you know, the one that's posted on the website is outdated, um, but I did send you the um, policies that we've adopted in the last year that are not posted on the website, um. And Brandon and I will figure out the mechanism by which somebody is going to make sure this is updated going forward so that we can all find it when we need it. So the first one, I thought we'd, we'd review the ones in the administration part of the handbook first. And there is this futures file, which we talked about.
Decider's List.
I don't think that does to you?
Okay, does this exist?
So, right. So I think when this was, this policy was created in two thousand and five or amended last in two thousand and five. And now that we have um, electronic calendaring mechanisms, I'm not sure how important a futures file is. Um, but this is really something I think for the staff to um, keep track of. I don't know.
The only thing about that is when there was a transition between town managers, as we know, there was a few major things that went through the cracks. And if the new town manager doesn't know to look for them, even if they're electronic.
Right.
I don't know. It seems like there has to be some redundancy in that area because there were a few major items that never made it to the next person. And not that we're ever gonna let Brandon leave here, but, yeah.
Well, I'm thinking about the um, Richard Bates created for the select board chairs going forward, a list of things that you have to do at the beginning of each fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and maybe the thing we'd wanna do is have the town manager do something similar. So things like reviewing, you know, the status of your insurance policies or this or that, um, whatever things you'd wanna check, um, cause I'm not sure, the things that were the most problematic and fell through the cracks when Rick left, I don't think they would have been on a futures file. You know, they were more like things that had been delivered to him that
Hmm.
he didn't tell anybody.
Hmm.
And then no one knew.
Right.
They needed action for it. Well, but does that make sense to you if there were some kind of list of um, things like insurance policy status or, I mean, cause you could calendar that. Um, and of course, I don't know what it's like in Maine, but in New York State, if your insurance policy's gonna lapse, if they, the law requires you get a bunch of letters, probably the same here. Um, to have a mechanism that would prevent our forgetting to do things.
So for. So for town managers. So, right, her high successor.
Right, because what it says in here is concerning future events that will require action to be taken by town officials.
Which is you all, right?
Well, and you.
I think it's everyone's.
Yeah.
Town manager, staff, Black Board.
I mean, I don't know, other than, um. The list that I have of these things that are in the town charter that we're supposed to do. Like what we're doing right now, once a year, we're supposed to go through these policies, which is. Annoying but necessary, so here we are. But what other things would there be?
Well, I could see contracts that we do yet that. Not only the town manager, but other staff has to address continuing contracts.
Right. When contracts end, the leases.
Right.
Yeah. Well, if we need to have a futures file, and that's what it is. Maybe we just make sure Brandon creates that.
But if Brandon and Tara.
Well, yeah, obviously he can delegate things.
Sure, I mean, it feels like a heavy lift, um, for. A problem that doesn't exist, because, like you said, like, I think the things that. I wish that I had been aware of, I'm not sure that they would have been in a.
So Jane said, yeah.
And so, a- and the other pieces that, like, if folks aren't using it, right, if they're using. Their electronic calendar and not, and scheduling things in there, then. But, I mean, if it's your policy and it's required, then obviously we'll, we'll get it done, I'm just.
Well, at the very least, we should have a list of the contracts and what their terms are, so. You've got a three-year plowing contract, you've got a. Five-year lease with the Historical Society, a ten-year lease for the lighthouse. What if there are other. Contracts that we, I mean, it sounds like the insurance stuff is an annual thing with MMA, so that's not going to be lost. You know, we're not going to overlook renewing that, because they're going to send you a bill.
But there's already a record of things like the contracts with the Historical Society, right, I mean, it's.
I mean, there's a, a historical society's like filed as their, they said it.
Yeah, but that's not the same as keeping track of when it expires.
I don't know, I like redundancy, I like paper, I'm sorry, I'm old, so, um. I don't know, I, even if you scribbled something every year.
File that holds all of the contracts that will expire.
The dates, like, the expiration dates. Things that we put off until next year. I don't know, I mean, I just, I don't think it has to be so formal.
I don't think it has to include all the contracts, it should just be a list. When their term is up. So, for example, we know from the Historical Society leases. If you're revisiting those, that is a many months involved in anything. You know, if the public has to be.
Well, if you, if you want to rework the whole lease, like.
Right, so.
It doesn't always have to take six months.
That's really. Like ticklers.
That's right, but you need to be reminded, just in case that's what you want to do, that you're going to need.
And so.
And even the comp plan.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand how this will be used, and so then, what the. Me or you all will review the futures file periodically, is that?
Right, that there, it would exist as a piece of paper or file, a computer file. That said, these are things that are going to come up for review on this date.
Right, I know, but once that list is complete, that's what I'm saying, how's it used? Be, because if, once it goes onto the network, it's not effective, unless somebody's.
But if we all know that there is a futures file, that's what's going to get called.
Right now, we don't even know, though. Right, it gets a policy and nobody even knows if it exists or not.
Well, none of us is aware of it, and, you know, Van wasn't aware of it when he.
Do you use any paper files? I'm embarrassed to ask you that question, but. I mean, I still like paper files, so why can't it be something on your desk that. You like jot things in, it doesn't have to be formal, it can be handwritten, and then when the fiscal year starts every year. Pull it out, pull Tara's out and say, okay, this is what's happening this year. These are things that are carrying forward that we might have put down for a couple of months. I mean, the things that we're actively involved in. You know, I should not be in a futures file, but if we've said, like, we're going to revisit the amount of road. Paved every year or something, or you are, jot it, jot it down. And you use it in a way that's helpful for you. I don't think we want to dictate.
Well, I don't think it will be, but that's fine. I'm happy to put it together so that. It's available if you all ask for it.
If you dropped dead, we'd have a list. Well, I mean, it's like, that's the thing, when Rick Erd left, and there were things that. We, maybe we would have wanted to know were coming up.
Blue Sains there.
Right.
I will say that currently, like, Tara is the redundancy, now that she is, is in that assistant town manager role that. As long as we didn't both drop dead at the same time, then, uh. Then that redundancy.
You're now the open house.
But I, 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 we can, we can put one together. I just wanted to make sure I understood. What the hope and intent was, so that we could do it the best.
I guess if you came back to us and said, Tara and I discussed it, and we think it's ridiculous, I would have to live with it, but. In my brain, I like something on paper on my desk all the time that says. These are the things, you know, twenty-twenty-six to twenty-seven, these are the things that are coming up. But you've just said it wouldn't be helpful for you.
But, and, but to me, that what you're talking about is more like a to-do list than what the futures file language says. Which is what are the terms of contracts or commitments by the town? And when they would need to be renegotiated, um. Or come up for review, and so, and whether you do it on paper or. A file, a, a computer file, I think it's important for people to know where it is. So that. We, if somebody asks, when is this lease up, when is this, and you just don't know off the top of your head, you could look.
I will say there's not one on our network, so if, if it does exist, it may be in paper format, and. I'll start by looking for it. Um, and then we will put one together and bring it back to you all at a future meeting to review.
It says on here, it's supposed to be open to review for the public, so we need to really think about. What would be helpful and what would not be helpful. So the next one is the town meeting rooms, do we have anything to say about that? Do people look at that? So, the tax-acquired property policy, we, um. Rescinded the policy that is in the handbook line, and the policy that we adopted. Last fall. Was to follow the law, you know, the new law. Now, it may be that, that. If the MMA has articulated all the procedures, that we would want to. Say that we would follow that. But I think it's fine to say we're going to follow the, the law and procedures that were established.
I got our procedures on this from, uh, Bill Kelly, not from anybody.
I think, I think it's covered by what said, that says there.
Okay. And, you know, one of the things, Brandon, to when we figure out how you're going to read the pages. The policy manual says that it has to include all the previously. Previous policies that have been revoked or replaced, so you can't just. Take out the old one and put in the new one, the old one has to be maintained in the back in the appendix. Um, Town Office of Operations. Now, this, I thought maybe should change, because it says that the Select Board is going to decide. The hours for the Town Office. But I, and I know you have times where you open late, because you have a staff meeting and stuff. Which should be entirely appropriate.
Oh, you, you all are supposed to decide temporary.
Well.
I did not know that.
May be approved. Maybe, maybe it's okay, because it says. Temporary changes to the hours of operation may be approved. But workshops and meetings may be scheduled by the town manager, so maybe it's already the way it is.
Great.
There's no other, I mean, the only other time is if there's a snowstorm or an emergency is covered, so.
I think that, I interpreted that policy as, like, if I was like, we're only going to be open four days a week now.
Right.
That you all would have to approve that.
Right. Stop me if you have any fascinating contributions to make here. The public hearing policy, do people have any thoughts or changes to that one? They did not. Leave that one. Community service, how often do we have people? That have been ordered to provide community service to the town or, um. Something like that.
I've never heard.
Didn't happen in my first year.
It also says schools can mandate community service as part of a class, but, and I know, well, back in my lawyer days. There was somebody who was ordered to wash all the school buses for starting a fire in the school bathroom. And so that was community service of a sort, that someone.
All high schoolers are required to do is seventy hours for graduation.
But they haven't done it at the town.
They did not last year, that's all I, I haven't asked again.
My oldest did all this through Parks and Rec, so.
That was good.
Good.
So that was for the town.
And Girl Scouts are doing some, um, with Parks and Rec as well.
So, I don't see that we need to make any changes to that one. The Records Officer, which is the Town. Clerk, which is you. It says that when the Records Officer leaves. We're supposed to notify the local government records board. Would we have notified them that you're it now? Maybe not, so.
But, sure, maybe. I have a lot of those titles, and so.
Right.
And I filled out a lot of paperwork for, you know, Public Health Officer and so on, and.
Right, but I don't know that we've notified this person at the state that you're now the Records Officer for our town.
Right, I, when I came on board, there was a bunch that I had to bill out to become the official person for different things, so I can't remember if this was one of them.
All right, um, the Town Department list, we did update that last year, so the one. Um, from twenty-twenty has been. Reseated, superseded by the one that was adopted August fifth, twenty-twenty-four. You have no changes to that, right? No changes to the Town Departments?
No.
Since then?
No.
So next is the website privacy and disclosure policy. I guess the one question, a couple of questions I have about this. It says email messages will be treated the same as any other written communication. They may be subject to public inspection or legal disclosure. And may be saved for a period of time before they're destroyed. What are we doing about emails that come? To the town, to all the town email addresses?
I save all of my emails, I don't delete any, um.
Even if it's like the meeting is Tuesday at two o'clock, you keep them all?
Um, I delete, yeah, I keep those, I delete, um, mailing lists essentially, it's the only thing that I delete from mine.
And there, there's also an email house soon.
Direct communication along this.
A list. So, the next one, policy after this, is the email policy for elected officials, which is the five of us. And.
I don't believe my full, the full staff follows that same.
Treating it the same as written communications.
Well, I don't think that they know they have to save it for five years. So if that's the case.
I think. It would appear from this, now.
It's up to you guys.
No, it's not, if there's a law that says something.
What's the Select Board policy, though?
Well, except that it's based on. Um. It says this policy is based on the requirements of Title One, Chapter fourteen A, Notice of Information Practices. So if it's based on state law, then, and the freedom of access stuff, we don't have the discretion to change it.
Didn't you all get legal advice about whether or not you should be saving emails?
We did, that, we had a workshop with Bill Kelly soon after Wendy and I came on board, was an inner. But, you know, meet and greet Bill Kelly, and one of the things we asked him was about. Emails, and should we, did we need to save all of our emails? And he said, no. Do you remember that?
I don't, but I, I mostly save all of mine, unless I've accidentally deleted them, which is possible, but I save everything.
I, I don't save the ones necessarily that say we're meeting at two o'clock.
I don't save the ads, you know, we get all those, like, capital strategic, I, I do delete those, yeah.
I mean, anything with any substance I save, but if we're supposed to save every, like. Can you all meet on Friday? We, and we should know that.
That kind of defies common sense.
I agree with you about that.
Well, it might, it might become relevant if you're refreshing someone's recollection, when did you meet? I mean, there, there could be reasons why those are appropriate to save.
Well, so for now, let's all save all of our emails. And we can always.
Staff as well.
Um. I'm trying to look and see whether this. Applies to everybody who works here.
Or is this just for us?
Well, that, the first thing is the website policy, so that's, so let me move to.
The, the introduction references Title One and Chapter fourteen A, but I don't believe that it means the whole policy does. Because then the public disclosure piece references a different chapter, so that's why I thought the email piece was.
Well, I'm moving up to the policy that was on page eighteen now, that's. But that is the email policy for elected officials, so this just affects the five of us, not even. You, or Tara, or Bill Batty, or whatever, um, so, whatever. Whatever the rules are for you are not encompassed in this.
Yeah.
Now, one thing is Tammy mentioned this before, in the email policy, it says. It recommends that we have that footer that says, you know, these are public documents and blah, blah. And I don't have that on mine, so I need to ask Bill Batty to figure out how to do that. Above the sig, below the signature line or whatever, so that people are made aware that. These are public documents, but I don't have any other. Questions about the email retention. questions about the email retention. I guess one question I have is we just keep these like forever? Ah, you know, are they being backed up somewhere? What about Van and Richard Bates? You know, people, I mean, Van still has a role as a chair of a committee, so he still has a town email. But we should be saving when somebody goes off the select board. All their emails should be captured somewhere and archived for just this purpose.
We, we do not do that.
We need to make sure we do that.
You have to pay for every like email on a license, just so you're aware. That's why we don't do that.
Well, we, but we are required to save them.
Is the whole system backed up? I mean, is there somewhere that the whole system?
Like a cloud or something?
Yeah, but so.
No, I'm not saying that everybody like Richard Bates still needs to have an email address that's a town email address. He no longer has the town email address.
Right.
But I'm talking about all the emails that he wrote in the nine years he was on the select board. Should be, well, if the rule is five years, they're supposed to be maintained, then for the until he went off, let's say that's three years worth or whatever. We should, those should still be maintained by the town somewhere. So we need to just make sure we're following the law about maintaining stuff like that. I mean, especially.
That one is the law, that's on.
Yes, cause it, it says you're supposed to keep. I mean, obviously, somebody who was the chair of the select board who's communicating about the purchase of Port Clyde Landing and contracts and this and that. We need to be saving those for however long we're required to save them. So. Are we still using Google Analytics?
I haven't used it for anything.
Well, I know we were, there is a way that um you can check how many hits you had on the website or to different parts. And we were using Google Analytics for that, but then I think when we have the new website, it might be a different company. And that's in the policy. So if that's changed, maybe we need to just sit down with Bill Batty about a couple of these.
If you put together your questions for Bill, I will meet with him and report them.
I will do that then. And the same for the website policy. You know, we, we decided our last meeting that would, we would include the community calendar. And um so we need to update the website policy, I think, to reflect what we decided last time that, you know, the, our website includes links to other local nonprofits and organizations as a resource, but it's not an endorsement or a promotion of their information. So.
That wasn't here.
Well, what it said was there's, there's a section on links, but there's a section on posting of events. And it used to be that we were not gonna post anything that wasn't a town thing.
Well, we still don't. We, we still just link to it. I don't, we, we don't post any events that are on the calendar. We just have a link to it.
Okay.
Right, you think the policy might, we could have a disclaimer about anything we.
It has.
Does it?
I think, I think we could add the little disclaimer. So let's see if there's any others, Susan, you know? No, just the email one. So um so I'll get to Brandon, a list of the website and email changes, but it didn't sound to me like we had any others for this section of the handbook. So for our next meeting, how about if we do pages twenty one to thirty seven of the policy manual? And there's also a select board code of ethics that we need to review. And even if we just acknowledge on the record that we all reviewed it, that'll be good enough for that. Well, thank you, everybody. Um, we have some appointments of new committee members. Brian, do you wanna do the Parkson Rec folks?
I do. I just have to send it to me. Um, there are members for the twenty six, twenty seven committee would be the Summer Awards. Keith Van, Megan Benner, Craig Thorther, Donna Tolman, Stephanie Ames, and Megan Fattler, who are all returning.
And are there any alternates or they're all full members? Okay. Well, I'll second those. Any discussion? All in favor? That's everybody. And you'll give Judy the spellings. Um, I had forgotten to include on the agenda that John Malte let me know that Leanne Kennedy Hardy and Jim Beleno are both willing to continue to serve as alternates to the Comprehensive Land Committee. So I will nominate that the two of them continue as alternates on that committee.
Second it.
All in favor? That's everybody. Okay, Brandon, you wanna talk about parking at the Port Clyde Landing?
Uh, sure. We, um, I think you all received an email from Veronica, is that right?
Did it, maybe, I think maybe just I got that.
Oh, okay. I should have circulated that. Probably when.
And look at it so you have everything. Wow, but you can go through the bullet points.
We should probably, when either of us are emailed, we should probably circulate it through the full board. Um, so Veronica cited an immediate need for parking enforcement and safety action at the Sport Clyde Landing. Her concerns around the lack of enforcement, which um, I did let her know that we were going to give the facility a couple of weeks to see how it was actually operating before you know, towing vehicles and, and all of that, that didn't seem fair to do right at the gate, but um essentially what I've heard both from her as up and others is that there are a lot of, some businesses are using the all-day parking for their employees, um, which is frustrating for certain folks because other businesses are not doing that. Um Brian and his group, for example, they will park vehicles up at uh the fire station and carpool down, uh which is incredibly helpful so that it doesn't clog up spots every day. But uh Monhegan Boat Line apparently has been parking, uh, you know, on any given day around roughly six employees in the.
You're kidding? That's a lot.
All-day spots. And I believe that there are, what are there, twelve all-day spots? And so, you know, half of them, um. Yeah, once by the time you add the fact that there's, you know, there's a, a house being built on Hopper Island, so there's contractors out there every day. You know, every day that I've been down there, the all-day parking is full. Um for a while, this was leading to folks then parking in the four-hour parking for all day. Uh, and so then all the spots except for permitted would be full all day long. We've put up signs uh to uh better sort of illustrate where the four-hour parking is and to let folks know that um any parking in there that is, goes over the four hours, uh vehicles will be towed at the owner's expense. Um I had a meeting with Auto Master to make sure that they um would work with us in that way. They're more than willing to. Uh, and so, and Ryan has, um, we've made up some sort of like violation of warnings, you know, wanting to give folks like a warning first so that they realize that, you know, you're parking, you know, illegally. Next time you're, you know, your, your license has been taken down next time your, your vehicle.
So you're putting that under the windshield wiper or what?
Yeah.
Okay.
Give them one more chance.
And so, you know, there is like a bit of an equity piece, right? Like the the intent of the, the landing was not to provide parking for employees of local businesses. Um, and so some folks are frustrated that some businesses are doing it and others are not, and that it's taking spots away from what would be customers. Um.
And are you gonna talk to Andy Barstow about his employees?
Um, yeah, I intend to. I, you know, right now it is all anecdotal that his employees are parking there. I mean, some of that is from Ryan's own observation, and so I, I trust that. But it's him, you know, observing cars and trying to figure out the trends or which, and so, um you know, and I under, you know, we provided a bunch of free parking, uh and part of Andy's business model is to sell parking for folks using the ferry. And so you know, I, I'm going to offer to him that we, you know, put signs to say no ferry parking, you know, that should be take place, you know, at Monhegan Boat Line.
Regardless of that, he'd stop filling our parking lot everywhere.
That would be the hope, yeah. Um, I went down there today to talk to him, but I, he wasn't around when I was there, so I'll, I'll be again tomorrow.
This morning was the first time I saw it not almost full by seven o'clock.
And.
The first time there wasn't a Monhegan boat going out at seven o'clock.
I was gonna say Monday, on Mondays, they run a, a ten AM boat, their first boat, so. By ten AM, it was full. I went down there then to check.
I, my impression is that he's trying to keep customers from parking there, so he's putting his people there. So customers have to park in his lot.
And pay, pay.
But he has room and his flat for his employees.
Right, but as.
But they don't pay.
To be fair, he's his town, he's got just as much right to park there as any other town, uh, business in town.
That's.
I don't personally think they should, but I mean, we can't tell him no until squidding there, people can park there.
Well, we don't. We, uh, they're not supposed to be. The, I, I, I totally agree with what Brian is saying, is that if we, if employees, we need to be consistent with it, obviously.
Yeah.
And one of the things that I am going to offer is that, you know, if, if folks would be willing to limit it to one car and carpool from the fire station, which has room for, you know, several more vehicles.
For us, I mean, but we were asked to do, so that's what we've been doing. But I mean, it's kind of a pain, but and it's really only a problem a couple of months a year.
Yeah.
I mean, this won't be a problem after Labor Day, so.
I was expecting more like um October, but maybe Labor Day.
Breaks pretty quick after Labor Day. I mean, it's definitely an issue, but I mean, there's obviously a need for all the parking there. And I know Veronica asked us to suggested we go to two-hour metered parking in the whole parking lot. Which personally is ridiculous, but.
I don't have any desire to, there was a lot of thought, you know, put in by the Harbor Committee. They spent, you know, several meetings on this. Um and so I have no desire to change the regulations and the format already. You know, we had, we don't even have a year's worth of data, so going to, for one, paid parking and only two hours, I, I feel pretty strongly against, so. That seems to really benefit food trucks and coffee shops more than folks using the facility for, you know, to go out on their boats.
I wonder if we should give it more time before we make any radical decisions. But then it's sort of an honor system, you know, don't.
Well, I will say one contractor that I saw parking in the four-hour parking for longer than the four, because we put the signs up, is now parking on Cold Sword Yard, which is even worse, I think, you know, and so, now we're going to approach her and tell her that there are permit spots still available if she wants to pay for, um, you know, a parking spot. Because we have not filled all of those spots.
How many permit spots do you have now?
I want to think that there are eight filled.
And we thought maybe it was gonna be about ten going in.
Yeah, there's thirteen reserved, I think.
Carl, do you have any thoughts about this, having served on the Harbor Committee and knowing all the time you all put into these decisions?
And you're down there often. You've seen it in effect.
Minimum give me a year. See what happens. It'll all go away in the fall.
It does.
The one thing I do think makes sense though is the, to recommend to employers that they do the carpooling thing, so that they minimize the number of cars there.
Hmm, but just to be clear, if he says no.
Right.
There's nothing with.
I'm, and my hope is that if we do our part to keep his customers from parking there, maybe he'll stop parking all his employees there, because they definitely don't need to, you know, and they have plenty of parking.
When Ryan's down there, or when I'm down there, um, or even Carl, you know, when somebody asks about ferry parking, we always do send them back up. The problem is we don't have somebody down there all the time. You, you could honestly justify a seasonal parking attendant for that lot.
Andy does. I mean, if, if we're on the same page, maybe his guy could say, hey, I just, you can't park over there. We have a strange situation with the town. We can't use that parking. You have to park here.
If we. They don't always stop. You know what I mean? They'll come all the way down the hill, not even like seeing.
Really? No, but I mean, if they see somebody parked there and then walk over to both, they could stop them and say something, but.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the only business I could see affecting being all-day parking. It is Andy's.
Well, Veronica mentioned that I think maybe some of the, her, her businesses used to sell or rent parking spots as well.
I think it's seaside and Culver parking.
Mm-hmm.
Which is fresh catch, isn't it? Culver parking lot?
I think so.
Yeah.
Let's see how it affects that, but.
I don't either. I can't imagine it as well. Well, I, I think maybe some of her employees were parking.
I think they used to carpool now from there. Way I was no problem, right?
She also mentioned something that I raised with you about the arrows on the pavement. So maybe you could tell everybody.
Oh, yeah. Um, the, the way that the parking lot is set up is pretty counterintuitive. You're supposed to, so you come in on the right lane and then you're supposed to go left around.
Counter clockwise.
Um, clockwise.
No, you're supposed to go to the right and come around.
Yeah, no, no.
You're supposed to. That's what I did.
Go clockwise.
Yes, okay.
But.
I was the first time, and then I thought, oh, the arrows should be closer to the front because by the time I was in the wrong spot.
Anyway, long story short, by the time we'd already received that feedback from everyone, we had already ordered the stencils. We just didn't have any in-house and so uh, it took us one day to realize that. And they just came in, so uh Steve's gonna be painting them.
I can get redirected.
We're, no, we're gonna just put, add arrows up front.
Oh, certainly.
To show you to go left. Because again, even that was done intentionally, you know, a, a large tractor trailer or boat holler. They can pull around and then they're lined up to back down the bow ramp. And so that was done by design. It was not, you know, um
Right.
Lack of thought or, and after that, it was done intentionally. And it works well when it's used that way.
I had one thing I should have mentioned earlier that people have been complaining to me about the porta potties, that they haven't been serviced down there, that they were really gross.
There was an incident with one of the porta potties. Um I mean, I was down there today. They were essentially empty.
Okay.
Um, but Ryan is down there again every day. And he has like washed and scrubbed porta potties. Somebody probably caught it, you know, later in the evening after that it happened. Um, again, could really, you, you could justify a, a, a parking attendant for this facility because Ryan, who is a department head, is directing traffic and cleaning porta potties and making sure that dumpsters aren't overflowing.
Watering plants.
Watering plants, yeah, you know, things that are.
We need someone lower on the totem pole doing those things.
Uh, at least some, yeah.
In the summer.
Because he's not spending much time in Tennant Harbor or Spur's Head or, you know, the the other areas, the other harbors in town. So anyway, I think that sort of sums it up. Um I will say, we will circulate Veronica's email. I will say, we will circulate Veronica's email. I will say, it is not as dire as that comes across. Um, there is. Room for enforcement and improvement, but overall, the facility is working really well. People are enjoying it, um. Kevin Liveson said it is, you know, his most successful year at the coffee shop by twenty percent, and he thinks it's because people can. Easily park and walk around now when that wasn't an option before, and if you're walking around, why not pop in and get a coffee, whereas. If you have to struggle to find a place to park, maybe then cup of coffee's on the corner. So. Um, he's been. Very enthusiastic, and I don't know that he started that way about the project, so.
Well, you may as well talk about the concert while you're on the subject.
And then Mark Liveson, Kevin's brother, approached me at um the grand opening with an idea to do a sort of summer concert series. Um, on the water down there, and so um. At Port Clyde Landing. Um. Told him I would. Talk with Brian. Something that I thought was a great idea, um. But I wanted to talk to Ryan to make sure that he felt. All right about it. Um, it is a. It will be a community fundraiser, um, so we have a date scheduled, um. Pending approval from this group, obviously, I I think with it being. A new use of a new facility, I wanted to at least get this um. The board's okay, but August thirteenth. Uh, the Adam Ezra Group is lined up to play. Normally, they are um. Four thousand dollars a show, but they're gonna donate this one, um. And the first event's gonna be a fundraiser for. Uh, the Snow's Pond property, former Ethan Scouting Building, um, he's. Mark was excited to have something that was, you know, um.
Did he come back and talk to, okay, great.
Public and.
That's fabulous.
Yeah. And so, um. The concert would take place. On the cement dock, the commercial dock, so the the band would be playing there. Um. All every part, just about every parking spot would be available still, and we'd wanna save, I think, a couple for. A food truck. Um, and then we would cone off sort of in front of the. Um, commercial dock and the the boat launch there, and folks could. Set up, uh, you know, their own sort of lawn chairs and whatnot. And then hopefully the green space, it's supposed to get sodden, are um. Loomed and seated tomorrow, and so hopefully that will have set in and folks can sit up there as well. So it wouldn't. You know, unlike the um grand opening, which. There was no parking for, this would at least retain.
And the idea is to charge for tickets, and then the ticket money goes. To our uh. Perps or rec.
Well, there's also some like sponsors of the event too, so I'm I'm not really sure how the. Finances of it breaks down, but um.
Well, we have to get an event insurance for that, don't we? Like special event insurance, or I don't know.
I don't know if we do, Brandon could look into that. I mean. Town has insurance. Yeah, I don't know that if you need an additional rider or something.
We don't get.
You might for something that's out of the ordinary.
That's why I thought he could check.
We don't for St. George's Days, I know that.
We didn't.
But we don't.
Get the grand openings.
Right. Hmm, but that was, that was kind of a one-off thing, it wasn't. I don't know. I don't know anything about it.
Anyway, the idea is that this would be a. Trial run for next summer to see if this is feasible, if it works well, if it's something that the town wants or doesn't want, you know.
It, what if it rains? Is there gonna be a tent? What's it gonna do?
Uh, it's a big area to cover with the tent.
I think it's rain or shine, probably, right?
Just. Or, yeah, I mean, I don't think that we'd be able to get this group. Again, they go on tour. They happen to be in town, um.
Well, he lives in town.
Right, but I don't believe that.
But for the summer, that there's not much summer.
The band is normally on tour, though, like they're around. You know, the the rest of New England and beyond.
Still, it's a really big name, I mean, that's.
Mm-hmm.
Well, given how soon that is. You know, less than a month away. Um. The sooner there's information to publicize it, the better.
Well, and Mark is gonna do a lot of that promotion and, you know. He's got some mailing list and all that, and obviously we will through our own channels too, but.
I I'd like to say it's a terrific idea, and it opens the idea of potential concerts in the future and. Really nice community events that could be fundraisers for various things.
That's what he was thinking about. I happened to be in Brandon's office when he first came in. And he said he has three. Sponsors who are willing to commit. Five thousand dollars for getting the band.
Wow.
And then all the proceeds. Would go to nonprofits. So this is the first one, like. Brandon said this year a trial run, and then. Maybe you have one month in the summer, next summer for different nonprofits in town, um. But that's one thing I was asking Brandon, like. Well, what if somebody says they wanna have a wedding down there? You know, are we gonna, where do we draw the line with the use of the landing?
That's not, you know, and what we'd sort of settled on is that's a. One, a private event. This is a public event and.
Right.
And benefits, uh, you know, a nonprofit, it's a benefit event rather than a. A private wedding or something.
And we do have other places people that have weddings.
Yeah, I I would be surprised if somebody wanted to get married in a parking lot or on a.
People probably got married at Marshall Point.
It is pretty.
They definitely.
It is pretty in the evening down there.
You can't do it anymore, though. I don't think they let you do it.
Oh.
At Marshall Point.
They do. They had one, um.
But they charge. They charge.
I'm pretty sure, yeah.
You don't remember the couple, Tom Zelog and his wife, that wrote a book about a year? They said they didn't include one thing in the in the book, you know, although it was day to day, like a year in the life of living at Marshall Point, they said one time there was a nude wedding there.
That's insane.
That's been chilling.
I don't know, but.
Uh. Takes all kinds, right?
Yeah.
So.
I mean, I can look into the special event insurance, but otherwise, you know, I was, tonight I was looking for. You know, either a thumbs up or down pending that.
Do people have any reservations?
So is this a private person planning an event on a public property? Or is he? A private person planning this as a public town event? I don't. Really, is he? I don't really understand.
It it's in collaboration, and so the idea is that, you know, it's a a community benefit um event.
But he's putting it together. It'll benefit the town. Now, going forward, if you decide to do more concerts in the future, will he be in charge of? Doing all these things?
That's a good question. I like.
Or is, are we gonna have a planner or? Hmm, you know, how?
I mean, it would be in, it would be in collaboration again, so I mean, he could never have free reign to run concerts without working with the town.
Right.
You know, um, but at the same time, if he was like, I'm not doing the work anymore. I'm not committing any staff member to making it happen, you know?
It may happen and it may not.
Yeah.
I guess the only concern I would have is. The just, it's easy with. The Snow's Point property being the beneficiary, because that's a town property, but. How or who's gonna be deciding when Blueberry Cove gets it, or neighbor to neighbor, or hearing gut or something, and. Concerns about playing favorites or letting everybody have a turn. That, I guess I would worry a little bit about that.
Yeah, yeah.
But maybe we do this one, and then.
People make those types of private decisions all the time, though, you know, like a business will have like a roundup program and pick the. Beneficiary without there being.
Right, but it's because we're a town that it's different. We're, you know. Local government, and we don't wanna be seen as playing favorites with one group or another, so I.
Then again, but I think that we're a collaborative partner in this because he's using town property. We wouldn't be making this happen on our own. Like, I don't have.
But what if there was a group that? Some majority of us didn't want, didn't wanna, didn't want on the property, we didn't like them for whatever reason.
Well, he's what he's.
Everybody. You don't, come on, no, I like no one, so I'd be the problem.
Well, I I think we can see how it goes with the one on August thirteenth, but then we ask for. For going forward, what exactly is their proposed process for deciding on?
Yeah, today, we're not committing anything more than one event.
One event, alright.
After that, you know, we can have questions, and and over the winter, we could outline all of these things.
Yeah, good.
So are people, is there a consensus that we're fine with this?
Uh, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Everybody, yes, okay.
And I I wanna know, you know, I can't commit to anything next year. We don't know how the. Facility will be used, right? If it turns out there's a bunch of. Equipment stored there all the time for commercial.
Right, and Tammy and I will be singing.
Yes.
Alright, well, we need to move along, because we have other things we gotta cover, um. Unfortunately, so. I realized after we talked about our priorities for the coming year at our last meeting, that we had not reviewed the priorities. That we set last year and what we accomplished, so I sent those out to everybody, um, so that. The minutes would show what our priorities were for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. And what we did. So the first priority for last year. Was community awareness and engagement. Which included develop, getting the new website up and going and notification system. And we did accomplish that. Um, we have listed in here developing a communications plan. Which we did not do, so that is something that could be um. Open for discussion. The next. Priority for last year was overseeing the comprehensive plan process. Which we did, we all know it's been submitted to the state, and we're waiting to hear. From them. Addressing sea level rise remediation and planning, which is also in progress. The resilience committee is hard at work with. The climate action plan. And also the engineers looking at. Um. Proposals for cold storage road and factory road. Um. Port Clyde issues, including the permit and fee structure for the new landing, which was done. Um, developing plans for the green space park. Which was.
To you.
Which was done, yes, I. Hope people will enjoy that. I think we all will, um. Monitoring issues of parking and public safety in Port Clyde, which was just discussed, um. Traffic and safety issues. Those, um. A lot of, a lot of the recommendations from the Ad hoc Traffic and Safety Committee. Have been implemented, and there's still work to do there, but I think. Brandon is attending to that. And then we wanted to make sure there was education about the revaluation. Um, property. Uh, revaluation process, we've, we had our first meeting with them, and there'll be more of that coming this year. Um, one thing. Let's see. Um. We have worked with the CDC about. Um, easing the housing crisis, you know. Um, their purchase of the. Thirty acres on Route seventy-three. But that's a slow-moving. Process, but that was in our priorities for last year. Um, the one for which we did nothing. We, because you all deleted it from the list when I was absent.
Alright.
It's.
Well, let's leave that then.
I know.
It has to be rentals.
Well, you know. This is how it goes, um. Considering land use regulation regarding short-term rentals, and. We put that on our list for this year, so. We can call it a carryover, even though it. There are mixed views on the select board about it. And then, um. Presuming putting money in our budget for acquiring land, which we did put into the budget. Um, so we're trying to get that back up from having spent some money out of there on Old Woods Farm. Lot eleven. And then the final one from last year, which was. Explore means of increasing enforcement of town ordinances. I think we're relying on Brandon to have the code enforcement officer. Do. A more rigorous job of enforcement. Is that what others all think we're doing about number ten?
Well, I always think that most of our ordinance. Uh, most of our ordinances have no means of. Enforcement. So that even if somebody identifies an issue. There's no backlash, fine. Repercussions when they don't follow. I know. Years ago, the solid waste regs were amended to include some fines, but even that was really controversial to get that through. And I think every time we come up with a new ordinance, we need to think about enforcement. Some means of enforcement, whether it's identifying staff. Whether it's um a penalty, but then who's gonna enforce the penalty, who's gonna collect it? There's all these issues that we have. In that regard, and I'm not suggesting perfect answers for them, because I think there's. There's not. Immediate answers for. So, well, for some things, there are enforcement mechanisms, like. Somebody was constructing something on Hopper Island, right, that didn't have a permit, and a stop work order was issued, did you say? So stop work orders can be issued. Um.
It was on Bram Island, recently, last week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. But you're right.
But Wendy's point is that even then, if they ignore the stop work order. Yeah. But what I had been sort of. Led to believe when I started was that the town did not really want to go down the road of. You know, issues going to court and spending tax dollars in that way, which is. Which is the next uh sort of step in enforcement.
Right. Yeah. Right? I think that's true, and so, I mean, I think. Are there creative ways to enforce some of our regulations? There's one regulation, I think, in the planning board that basically says if you've ignored. Other ordinances and you've ignored stop work orders, you will never advance in the process unless you correct all the issues. Um. But sometimes what that results in is sort of. Shallow corrections that aren't meaningful. So, yeah, so. I don't know. I mean, I think it's something to keep thinking about, how, you know. Who do we have? Who can? Monitor violations. I mean, at the time, I think years ago, we were having trouble with commercial contractors. At the transfer station. I don't think that's an issue anymore, but we were looking to bring them into line. So I don't know. I mean, there there must be other creative ways to do this. I just don't know off the top of my head about.
What do you hear at the town manager meetings? Brandon, or my other? Town managers about this issue?
Well, we have far more going on here than a lot of. Uh, towns do, which is a surprise to me.
More building.
You know, like what we do in a week here is. Uh, often more than what Sal Thompson will do in a whole lot. You know, and so. That means that there's a far bigger demand on our code enforcement office, um. And so, a lot of towns don't even have a full-time code enforcement officer. And, uh. You know, I I also think that. I don't know why. What I get, though, from talking to other managers is that. Our residents in town seem to desire far more enforcement than maybe some. Other towns, like if we get. Much more frequent calls about. This needing to be attended to by our code and code enforcement officer, you know, Dimmer Scotta, who's a. I think a pretty comparable town. They have far more commercial, their population is smaller because of it, but, you know, they. Had a part-time code enforcement officer.
I'm shocked, because I know the population of Dimmer Scott is the same as ours, pretty similar.
It's smaller.
But they have.
It's like half.
Wow. You mean, it's like twelve hundred and fifty people?
Yeah.
Really? See, I I thought, I sat with a member of their select board last year at the UNCO meeting, I thought he said it was about the same.
But I know they have all of that. You know, a big hanaford and ham and lumber and.
Far more commercial.
A ton. A ton of stuff like that. So you would think.
Yeah.
That they would have a fair number, although maybe if they have a big.
Well, they're sure of a shopping hub for the area.
Right.
The towns around them.
Well, down the road, I don't know if it would be appropriate to talk about like a five-year plan, a ten-year plan about the code enforcement officer and have the idea that somebody would hot, be hired in five years or ten years to just do enforcement.
But we have to have in place mechanisms for that person.
So that's the lag time that would allow us to do that. Yeah.
Well, I know you're always worried about spending money on legal fees, but it does.
Hopefully at least return some, like, right?
Uh, right. It does seem to me like this is a conversation that would be useful with Bill Kelly to ask him. He's represented a lot of municipalities. You know, what mechanisms might we put in place? You know, I mean, even the whole issue of the house um, in Martinsville that burned that, you know?
Mm-hmm.
We've been told we should be enforcing the state law about
Right, we should
Falling down.
Safe.
Right.
It needs to be made safe. Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, what exactly? How would that work? And I mean, has, has a decision been made not to do that? Like the building kitty corner across from the Baptist church in Tunnels Harbor that's falling down?
No, I've been, uh, there's been a plan in place for that to be taken out this summer. It has not happened yet. I
But is that because of the asbestos issue? It's gonna be a lot more expensive to take it down.
To do a contractor. He can do it himself in a, you know, but.
Yeah, but it looks unsafe to do it yourself, but.
You don't have to follow all of the same regulations around.
You do, though, if you do it yourself. I think you, you would get smacked by a DEP if you tried to do it yourself without bagging up the asbestos waste and taking it to a hazardous landfill and, yeah.
Well, okay, I, I didn't double check who I heard. It was either, I can't remember if it was Terry or Mike Smith. We were on site. They said that it's much easier if you do it yourself because you don't have to go through those.
So I don't, I don't know about that. Then we'd all do it, all these things.
Either way, I mean.
That, right.
Well, I mean, Terry, oh, I inspected my car. Here's my own registration. I, I don't know. I just think, yeah, um.
Didn't see you driving next to me there.
Well, I don't know.
It's not because.
I think we need advice about this because it is a repeat concern from residents, um, and it, and the planning board. Um, and it's bubbled up as something that we should make a priority. But other than saying to Brandon, you know, make Terry Brackett enforce our ordinances, what are we doing?
Right. No, I think it's, yeah, I think you're right. I think we should get advice about this because I know one time, I think we, we wrote a sternly worded letter to a commercial hauler. And I mean, they basically wrote back and said, bite me. And so we, you know, then no, nobody wanted to take it to court. So that was the end of it. We were like, you know, so we proved that we were weak because we didn't.
Well, that's my concern about never enforcing anything.
Yeah.
You know, I mean.
I wouldn't say that we never enforced anything.
I don't, I didn't.
I think that we've actually enforced more in the last year than we have in the three previous years combined. So.
So that's good to hear from you that you've communicated this concern to Terry and your sense is that he is doing more enforcement.
He said he's issued more stop work orders than he ever did under when Rick or Tim were here.
Hmm, mm-hmm, okay. But other than that, then I think it makes sense to, um, to talk to Bill Kelly about whether there's ordinance changes or other things that we could be doing because I like Wendy's idea of having kind of a long-term plan. If, if this is a concern, how are we going to get to where we want to go from where we are now?
So I'm sorry, I don't, I don't, I don't think I'm clear on what I'm supposed to be asking Bill Kelly.
What are mechanisms for enforcement across the boards that we could make, like through ordinance changes? Are there other creative ways?
Beyond fines and small claims?
Well, I mean, I think small claims is way down the list because I think we know that we don't want to spend the money for that. But um, for example, one of the things we talked about, I think a couple of years ago, is having some kind of generic enforcement ordinance that says like, any ordinance can be enforced by taking the following steps. So that it's not like planning board specific or solid waste.
Well, when I, when the land use ordinance was um, revised two years ago, May, we voted on it. I was on the little committee with Ann Cox and Michael Jordan and Terry Brackett. And I pushed for that and that went down. So at least at that time, I, and it would be worth revisiting with the planning board um, what their thoughts.
Isn't it the same people?
Yes, it is, but I mean, it's two people, two of the five.
But maybe if there's some legal reason that Bill Kelly can give them that they can hang their hat on.
Right.
That, um, I just think it would be onerous if we had to put enforcement mechanisms in all our ordinances. So what if we have some ki, and I don't know if this is possible, but what if we have some overarching enforcement mechanism for all our ordinances?
That doesn't really make sense to me. The land use ones seem like they're different from, say, you know, harbor moorings or, but I don't know. This isn't the place to mull that over, but so do you feel like you have any clarity about what to ask Bill?
No.
No. Okay, well, maybe.
So I think, so we were looking for other ways to enforce besides fines.
And stop work orders, yes.
So things that like won't end up in court?
Well.
You want to enforce them without ending up in court?
If there are options, if it, it may be that it isn't possible.
We could like refuse to register people's vehicles and take them.
No, that would not be illegal.
I don't know what we're hoping to find.
I mean, I don't practice in that area, so I don't know. There could be something staring us in the face that we're missing, but, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I.
I think, I think we just need him to advise us about if, like what you said, if you've got a SCAF law that you tell them, you tell them stop work and they don't, then what? You know, is our only option? Take them to court or is there other things?
That's the next step, right?
And if it's a minor thing, why did I not do?
Feels like we're expecting Bill Kelly to tell us like some secret that no other town knows.
Yes.
I don't know that that's realistic and we
He's gotta say, you can call me.
We already had a conversation about tonight, oh, maybe being intentional with our use of our, you know, what we pay in legal fees. Like this, this just seems like like maybe I'm pessimistic. If there was a better way, towns would be doing it.
I don't care about other towns. I just, I would, it wouldn't hurt if he just confirms what many of us think he would say, which is no, the only option, the next step, if you have a SCAF law, is to take them to court. And then we know that. And if there is an option of adopting additional ordinances, then we could think about that with the planning board. Um, because that is you know, the out of ten things that we had on our list last year, that and considering short-term rentals were the only things we did not accomplish out of ten.
Well, again, we did enforce more in the last year than we did.
So that's good. We did. Um, there was progress on that executed by the staff, so we appreciate.
And that included, you know, our, our posted roads ordinance. That was the first time that had ever been enforced.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So it's eight o'clock and we are, um, gonna have to vote to go over a few minutes.
You have all these signatures, don't forget.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so I'll move that we go past eight o'clock. Okay, okay. But we're, we're, so I, um, some people have had enough. Um.
Carl opposes.
It's time for him. He's in a position to go. Um, so I did type up what I believe reflects the select board priorities that we agreed upon at our last meeting. Tell me if you agree that these five things were the priorities. And then because we had decided things that were kind of in progress wouldn't count as priorities, I listed them separately. Okay. All right. Um.
It's sort of funny because it's not like we don't, they're not non-priorities. So in the, in the bigger sense, they are priority. But I, I understand what you're saying.
Well, that was the inclination of the group.
Yes, I remember we wanted to pare the list down.
Right.
I thought it looked good.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Thoughts? Brian?
Look good.
Tammy? Yeah, this was the answer. Ask them when it's late.
Yeah, we're tired.
Sure, it's fine.
Lovely.
All right, well then, I will provide these to Judy so she can attach them
Okay.
to the minutes so that if somebody from the public wanted to see what our priorities were, they would be able to do that. Um, Brandon, you've got the Hertz Next Speed Study and any other things in your report?
Um, no, I think the contract's the only piece. I'm just letting you on that there's a speed study that will be taking place on Hertz Neck Road to try to assign speed limits to it, um. Both summers, there's been concerns because uh, the road grows up or the shoulder rode up and people have to walk in the road normally kids. There's no speed limit assigned to it, so.
Doesn't have a speed limit?
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't that make it forty-five?
Uh, yeah, typically unposted roads are maybe forty-five. Yeah, but we unfortunately, we can't, even with being a town road, we can't dictate its speed limit. So um, DOT is coming down to do that, so.
Yeah.
I live on that road. A lot of people walk it. A lot of people walk there, go on.
Yeah, it does have a lot of pedestrian traffic.
It's almost like a playground up there.
All right, so um, many of our committees, we don't need to do reports, but for the planning board we do.
All right, let's see. Um, we met on July eighth. Um, the there was a public hearing on the Dizer Woods subdivision. Um, the preliminary plan for the subdivision after the, the public hearing closed, the preliminary plan was accepted at the meeting. This is the final plan and the accepted drawings were signed. Um, and let's see, um. The next issue was a large pier being proposed for Sea Smoked Road. Um, the DEP and Army Corps permits are already obtained. It's going to be quite a long pier. I think it's a hundred and eighty feet long, yeah. Um, because of the
To get to deep water?
Yeah, to get for the water craft that is being proposed to use that. So there is a site visit on Monday, the twenty-first at five-thirty. And the butters are being notified. But what you're probably most interested in is the discussion of contract zoning by Rob Kelly in terms of the housing project. And um, so there was some interesting discussion, um, whether for this project and this project only, some negotiation could take place in terms of housing density that would make economies of scale for the particular project on seventy-three. And the planning board brought up in their current ordinances, there's um, waivers discussed in the ordinances and waivers of certain underlying, um, it's unclear whether it's underlying proposals or actual ordinance applications. So there's going to be further discussion on that. So, you know, some of the things that would be appropriate for contract zoning is lot size setbacks and contract zoning is kind of a misnomer because we don't have zoning in this. We just have things like lot size and setbacks. So I personally wonder whether it's going to be, um, sort of turn people off to hear that, that this project is getting special treatment. So I think if this goes forward, we're going to have to do a lot of public education that what it really means. And one thing you can do with contract zoning is say, the project has to give a public good. So the public good would be, you know, more dense housing that would allow us to make more housing units available. So I, I mean, when I took property in nineteen eighty-four, eighty-five, contract zoning was really frowned upon, but I think it's it's turned a corner. I mean, I, I understand why they want to think about it for this particular project.
So how is it different than like a subdivision? If presumably the way they get around the septic issues and the lot size issues is that they put in a bigger septic capacity? Well, or the sprinklers or whatever.
Right. All those things that you mentioned, I think are anticipated by the existing ordinances. So these would be decisions made that would be out, completely outside of our current ordinances. Now, the downside of that is then it looks like we're awarding this one developer all kinds of, you know, special um, reasons that they can go forward with the development. And, you know, a regular subdevelop, a regular development wouldn't be um, in line for these things like lot size and setbacks. So.
Well, to what extent is the lot size requirement driven by state law versus our local ordinance? I thought, I mean, here we talked about Lori and Ken Gill's property. And we were saying the septic capacity is what it is. There's no waiver. There's no exception. Why would there be an exception for the lot size, for example?
Well, it's a negotiated contract that exists outside of the current ordinances. So I don't think, I mean, one way to do this is to change all our ordinances, which would allow denser housing, less set setbacks. You know, denser than the ADU issue.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I personally don't think that's a great thing because down the road, then all the ordinances are changed and all the protections are removed, all the public safety, things are removed. So this, the idea of contract zoning is it's this project, this narrow project that you're allowing the rules to be bent, waived, whatever you want to call it, in order to achieve a public good. And the public good is housing for young families and workforce housing, whatever you term you want to call it.
It's not affordable.
Well, it's not, it's not affordable in the statutory definition.
Right, right.
Which is important to clarify because if it was, it would not need.
These expenses.
Right, 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 right. So.
Right. So the contract feature of contract zoning is that it's a legal contract between the developer and the town.
It is.
So really what it means is project-specific zone.
It does. And so that probably would be a kinder, gentler term because, I mean, in my mind, contract zoning sounds like, hey, we're giving you a really good deal and it's sweetheart. It's not benefiting the rest of the town, just you. So, yeah, so I think there's a lot of uh, issues. I mean, there's no pending proposal right now, but I think there, the CDC's idea is to come back with a specific proposal along those lines.
And this group would only have to decide whether or not to put it to voters.
That's right.
Like, yeah, this group can't decide at even dead.
But I, I do think that that's something that's appropriate to go to the voters.
Right. I was just saying something, you know, like, this group isn't responsible for weighing the pros and cons
Right.
of contract zoning, just of whether or not this should go.
Right, you're right.
Right, but given that it was a very high priority, the housing shortage in the comprehensive sur, plan surveys, and we all know from our friends and neighbors what a high in the comprehensive ser- plan surveys, and we all know from our friends and neighbors what a high priority this is. If we support the idea of making it possible for there to be some housing for the missing middle, this is what they call it at that.
Right, right.
UNCAC meeting, it's not affordable in the statutory definition of you have to be have a really low income. I think people, a fair amount of people might support it.
Yeah, I, I was just trying to sort of iterate that your decision is much easier than, you know, in favor of contract zoning or not, you know, that you all don't have to really decide that.
Right, but one of the, uh, uh, complexity of the Kenny Woods proposal was, to what extent did the select board want to be supportive and promoting that project that was being developed by an, a nonprofit that it wasn't the town? And, you know, we, the select board voted to put it to the voters, even though some people were not as supportive as others of that particular project, but I think it, if we were all on board with the entire concept, um, it might be more helpful in making it happen, but we'll, we'll jump off that bridge if we come to it, I guess.
Even if you didn't achieve the desired outcome the last time, you know, the Kenny Woods went up for, you know, boat. I, I do think I agree with your process. Like, I, I think it was on the CDC to really do that promotion, as it will be again this time, and the education and all of that. And we can support it by holding public meetings and putting things on the ballot, but at the end of the day, it's their project and
Right.
they need to be the ones responsible.
The CDC has, um, hired a developer who does these kind of developments called dooryard.
Yeah.
And I guess they've been successful across Maine, so. Yeah, I mean, you know, we'll all have to come to our own conclusion about whether this works. I guess I'm personally against changing ordinances unless we need to, to bring into compliance with state law. I'm, I'm against whole, whole cloth changing ordinances for this particular problem.
Right.
Because then down the road, you're gonna have a mess that you change some ordinances and not others and so.
Well, it's a free draw.
Yeah.
Then it's a.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think the next committee that has met is the, has the cemetery committee met? No, they were planning to meet, but then they had the weather alert that day and they had canceled the meeting. Then all the storms went out around us, but, so.
Okay, um.
The Conservation Commission, have they met?
I'm hoping that I can, if you're there.
You're here in a second. Yeah, I'm here.
Bring my notes, so I'm relying on you if you don't mind.
Okay, no, that's fine. Um, just before I do that, when you were talking about priorities, one of the priorities, because Steve forwarded that list to me, was the open space plan as part of that. So will we be getting, will we be getting some direction from the select board on doing something in that regard?
So on the list, the, there's the top five things that are sort of new priorities and then other projects underway or to undertake under land use issues. It does say begin work on an open space plan. Um, and we were not more specific than that, but you and I could talk about that. And, um, you could bring something to the select board when it's not quite so late.
Sure, sure. No, I was, I always wondered if you.
To attend to it.
Absolutely, the Conservation Commission would be involved in anything like that.
I'd even say so.
Yeah, that, that is what it says.
Okay, well, we can discuss that another time when it's not so late then.
Right.
I guess the key things that I would bring up was on the Fort Point project, the good news, we received our final payment last Friday. And I sent some information to Brandon today to determine what we should do with the positive balance that we have. And we can discuss that at a future time after Brandon and I have a chance to talk about it. And the sign that we've been talking about getting for well over a year now was also installed last Thursday. So I think the two things that were still open issues on the project have now been completed, so.
Great.
That's good, good. Um, and we had a, a, a good workday down there, uh, this past Saturday to get things cleaned up. A lot of things were going into the path quite a bit. I guess the other thing on that is that we did some exploration. I didn't personally do it, but they did exploration, uh, on the, uh, property that was acquired by, donated to the town on the marsh. And they used the canoes from the new kayak wreck, canoe rack to go over there and do that exploration. And we'll be discussing that further at our next meeting. Um, and let me see what else of any significance. Oh, and on the twenty-second, we're having that, um, event at Fort Point to discuss, um, the ash trees and the Emerald Ash Bora and an entomologist from the State Forest, Department of Forestry is coming down to give that walk and talk discussion. Um, and I think that's, that's, those are the key things.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Has the Sheriff's Committee met?
They may tomorrow, tomorrow night, and solid waste and recycling, um, there. For their meeting, they're going to have a table here at the open house.
Okay. Um, so yes, encourage people to come to the Wednesday open house at the town hall and learn more about lots of different town programs and services. Parks and Rec?
Uh, yeah, we did meet. Um, mostly about St. George Days and part of it was the five K. Um, they've been having a problem with the registration website. So they've kind of transferred back to the old, come in and sign up unless they can get it straightened out, but uh, so that may hurt our numbers a little bit, but, um, other than that, it was talks about trophies and who's setting up and uh, there was one question, somebody asked if there was any way to close the road.
Where? Oh, during the race?
We've had some pretty scary encounters with cars that don't care that there's a hundred people standing there and, I mean, if you can't, can't, but a couple of years ago, the ambulance was, just happened to be there and they just stopped everybody and it really was nice. But I don't know if that's something that can be done or not. It just came up at the meeting, so.
Well, I know, um, like all of the EMS crew is like running it this year, so.
Yeah, yeah. We're well covered.
So, yeah, so I don't know, I'm.
I don't know if it's possible, I gotta close for like a parade route.
Yeah, I mean, if Ashley just talks to, um, either Katie or Mike Smith or, I mean, or even Ryan, um.
Right, I didn't know the process if there was one that closed down roads for now.
The, the fire department is usually stretched pretty thin on that day, um, but you know, you can talk to, we have barriers that could even be put out and.
I mean, we could probably man it if we had the barriers and permission to do so, you know, I mean, obviously it's gonna irritate some people if we close Driftin Road.
I, I, like Wendy said earlier, safety should be a priority.
We've had some times where you got sixty or a hundred people standing there at the end of the race, I know Steve knows, and cars will just come flying down the hill and they don't care. It is, it's come up before and while I had the ear, I thought I'd ask, because it did come up. Uh, so I'll talk to Ashley about that.
Yeah, tell her to connect with Steve and I and we can figure it out.
All right, um, the other thing they talked about was we've ordered the new scoreboards for the school. We're putting new, putting new scoreboards in the gym, all donated by boosters. We're gonna pay for it. It's nine thousand dollars for the scoreboards and a couple thousand for installation. It's all coming out of fundraiser money that the boosters have. Um, other than that, we're doing the same stuff we've done at St. George's Concession Cornhole. We're doing two tournaments this year, one for more kid-friendly.
So they get a chance and Brandon just.
Yeah.
Um, they did.
Select Board team.
They did. I'm rewarded as the new chairman in my absence until the new committee takes over. And I'm, my guess would be should be chairman next year, but and they said they did schedule an August meeting, which we haven't had in years, so it's gonna be August fifth at six o'clock. Have another meeting.
Okay, was there anything else about St. George Days that we should say?
There's like thirty-two different organizations signed up for the parade.
Wow.
Yeah, otherwise, nothing that folks need to know, the schedule and flyers being circulated, so you've probably seen it. Um.
Now we just need the weather to cooperate, right?
Saturday.
Saturday's nice, yeah.
For now. It'll be a second nice Saturday all year.
Great.
And, um, the resilience committee?
Um, they are not meeting till the eighteenth Friday at, in South Thomaston. So, and I know I have issues about that all, anyone who wants to needs to be re-upped because it's an ad hoc.
Right.
Committee, so.
So you'll bring.
Yeah, I will, I will bring the names.
Okay, because I've been in touch with Patty St. Clair.
Okay.
About the, that Excel spreadsheet of all the committee members and, um, so we'll update the, um, Parks and Rec people that, and names, all the names that come in.
Right, yep.
All right, so, um, yes.
Jane? Yeah, I had one more thing I should mention that I forgot about was on Oldwoods Farm. Obviously, we would have number of documents that are going back and forth to try and finish, finish things up before we can actually open the trails there. Um, the key, the key one is the agreement with the HOA and we don't wanna open up the trail to the general public until that document is completed. Um, and I've been back and forth with Bill Kelly and then he was going back to the LMF lawyer. And Bill finally said to me, why don't you go through your contacts and see if you can get them to make some progress? And I went to the director of LMF. Unfortunately, the day I went to her was the day before she left on vacation for two weeks. So she did send an email back. She said she talked to the, the, the LMF lawyer um, and that they were looking for some information from Bill. So we're back and forth between the two lawyers, trying to figure out where the missing pieces are right now, but, um, no, no significant progress is it, was what it sounds like. I thought we were getting close, but not so.
But then, then once that's done, you'll be ready to open it to the public?
Well, I think what, what's gotta happen is we gotta get, LMF has gotta approve the conforming easement that Bill drafted. And then that conforming easement, the LHOA has to have a meeting for them to approve it and take it to their lawyer. So, you know, it's.
It's a couple of months, maybe.
Probably more, yeah, it was a couple more months. We were hoping we'd have something that we could officially open the, the area this, this summer, but it doesn't say, it don't seem like it.
Did everyone read the article on Midcoast Villager about Belfast and the unsigned?
Yes.
Yeah, the u- unsigned.
Easement.
Easement.
Well, yeah, it wasn't signed and it wasn't.
Right, so it's some, it's something that we should always be.
Right, I mean, that's what happened with the flack property.
Yes.
That it was never recorded, but at least in that case, it had been signed.
Yeah, yeah.
It'll be interesting to see what.
That's a mess.
Yeah, it's a really a mess.
Um, so for the next meeting, the select board policies pages twenty-one to thirty-seven and the code of ethics, and I'll send a reminder email about that. I did want you all to tell me, you know, we need an annual meeting with all the committee chairs. Um, and I thought we should do that either August eleventh or August twenty-fifth. Ken, you're a committee chair who's here, um.
I've been to those, I've been to those meetings for fifteen years now, so I, I don't think I'm gonna learn anything new.
So you don't care which day it is, um.
I have to, I have to look. I don't have my calendar with me.
Well, I did ask Suzie, who's chair of two committees, and she said she could be here on the eleventh.
Hmm.
Maybe we just pick the eleventh and let them all know. And, I mean, there are, at, at least the Board of Appeals will not yet have selected a chairman. So maybe they could send somebody, but that isn't like a typical committee anyway. Um, so it's not as important. Okay, well, time to adjourn, I say.
Signatures.
Um, so anybody that wants to sign their name forty times can stay and do it. I think I'm gonna come in in the morning and do it like at nine.
Is it really forty times?
No, I.
You all don't have nearly as many as I did.
Well, if you pass it down, like.
The red ones.
Good, then, just the red ones? I've never signed things without reading them, so I'm gonna come in. Because that's what I'm like.
Of three people.
There you go.
I'm going to.
I know, I have had that happen.